Hi, Madam Chair.
Sounds good. I'll just do a quick roll call. Mr. Stenbridge?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Present.
Ms. Panado?
Present. Happy to take over.
Yes, Mr. Collins?
Present.
Okay, I am transitioning chair duties to Ms. Panado as I, A, need to jump off early and B, as you can hear, is, I'm congested, so turning it over to Ms. Panado.
All right, we have a substitute. Hopefully everyone behaves.
I'm not sure. Looking to, we, before we start on the hearings scheduled for 1:00 p.m., we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
Mr. Stenbridge, it's Attorney Lynn's. I have two matters to address from the 1 o'clock clock.
Go ahead, Attorney.
The first one is 106 Barnes Avenue. We'll be requesting a referral in that matter.
So you're referring to Case BOA 1533260 with the address of 106 Barnes Avenue?
That is correct.
And would you explain to the board what, why, and how long you think you need?
Yep, for the record, it's Richard Lynn's, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, requesting a referral. January would be fine. Again, this involves the recommendation of the BPDA to give us an opportunity to review to see if we can go ahead and make this project a little bit better for purposes of addressing those comments.
Madam Chair, I suggest January 23rd similarly to give applicant opportunity.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer, defer this case until January 23rd of next year.
Second.
Great. Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge, the second matter is the interpretation at 1:00 p.m. for 60 Oak Ridge.
That would be Case BOA 1485550 with the address of 60 Oak Ridge Street. Go ahead, Attorney Lynn.
Thank you. And for the record, Richard Lynn's business address, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of Derek Joyner, who is the petitioner to the interpretation, Madam Chair, we're going to withdraw the interpretation request. The matter has been rendered moot as we are satisfied with the decision of the Inspection Service Department with respect to our request.
So you don't need a deferral through any other, any other time. It's, it's been resolved.
But you can take it off the docket. Thank you. Yes.
All right. So motion to withdraw?
Do we need a motion and a vote?
I believe, I believe we did.
Yeah, it's not as great.
Need a motion to withdraw, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So we don't need a vote? Any kind of action by this board? All right, great.
Thank you.
Chair. Hearing none further. We'll move on to Case BOA 1505569 with the address of 30 to 32 Hastings Street. This is also an Article 80 case. Is the, is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Good afternoon, board. My name is Glenn Hoffman. I'm with GPH Design, Architecture and Planning, and I'm located at 1 Adams Street, Milton, Mass. I'll be representing the owner of this matter.
Please proceed.
Okay, so this is, this is a proposal for a, it's actually a two-story deck, but it's three stories high. There is, there are existing metal grate fireplaces with no access at ground level at this property. And the, the owners, they're not going to, they're not going to renew the license for the existing fireplaces for obvious reasons. If you scroll down to the existing elevations, you can see what's in place now. A little bit further, right there, that, that demo plan shows what's in place right now. It's basically just a metal grate at floor level, and you can go out onto that. There's no way to get down actually to the ground. So I was hired to design new decks and exterior stairs for this property, which is an existing six-family, also West Roxbury. The new decks would be wood-framed and fully access, fully, full access from all the units from their decks down to ground level. Any questions? That's, that's what the new elevation of the decks will, will look like.
Can you address the zoning violations and whether they're pre-existing or not?
They're all pre-existing ones, zoning violations, that's correct. So there's a rare setback issue. And I believe the, the house itself is not, is existing non-conforming for the zone.
And have site plans, we have a note from the BPDA that site plans haven't been submitted? They have submitted?
No, the site plans have been submitted. If you scroll to the front, we have site plans for this project.
Okay.
That's the existing, and there's any proposed site plan as well.
There wasn't, Madam Chair, but it, it does say, there is a note from the BPDA, and it said that they have, the plans haven't been reviewed by ISD. So have you received confirmation from ISD that these plans have been reviewed?
Plans would need to be reviewed for the ZBA hearing to take place, correct? That's, that's, plans were submitted to ISD. They responded with a refusal letter, and that kicked off the ZBA process. We've had a neighborhood meeting. We've had a meeting with the local jurisdiction as far as neighborhood.
We don't have any point on BPDA?
If I, wait.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm confused by the question, I think.
I think I can try to help. So I think if we scroll up the first page of the plans, at least the ones I'm working off of, did have that stamp for reviewed for ZBA. See the red one? So perhaps maybe it was a timing issue with the BPDA. I'm not quite sure how that.
Ms. Panado, it's Jeff.
Oh, great.
So we didn't have those site plans, but we made this recommendation for a deferral only because it didn't show. We have, in our system, nothing that shows setbacks from property lines or anything like that. That's why we recommended deferral.
So the plans we're looking at today, we don't have?
That's correct.
But.
They were submitted to ISD. I have a record of that. Whether they made it to Jeffrey or not, I don't know, but they were submitted.
But Jeff.
You had to submit them prior to going forward with ZBA. That, that was requested prior to going forward with ZBA, I thought.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is.
Right, Hansel, what were you going to say, Hansel?
I was just going to say that you, you, we have them in front of us and.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just saying what we have.
Yep.
From our point of view and why our recommendation is what it is. We're not necessarily opposed to it. It's just we have no idea what the setback.
Correct. Correct, that's right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation, but we have new information in front of us, correct?
Right, right.
Thanks.
All right, terrific. Any questions from the board? If not, we'll take public testimony.
Hi, folks. Dan Hudson from the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services here, the West Roxbury Liaison. We held a butters meeting for this project on September 13th. Neighbors had no questions, were supportive, then moved to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on September 26th. Were passed unanimously, same thing, no questions from the board. That said, we defer the judgment of the board.
Madam Chair, members of the City Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty, the council do have record and support.
Thank you. Okay, I have no wasted hands.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, it seems like the proposal is improving the egress condition on the property. With that, I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
Second.
All right, Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I too vote yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you.
Next, we have Case BOA 1496565 with the address of 34 to 36 Cohasset Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's with the business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Michael Keane. We can probably jump right down to maybe the second or third slide. Yeah, that's probably a good spot right here. Okay, so, Madam Chair, this is an existing two-family dwelling, sitting on a 5500 square foot lot. It is located in 25,000 zoning district. Our proposal involves a complete rehabilitation of the interior as well as the exterior, and the addition of, or I should say, the addition, the extension of the existing dormers that are located on the upper level. We can slide down to the next slide, please. Just a couple of views. Let's get right down to the before plan. It's probably the easiest place to go. Perfect. So exist, next slide. Yeah, next slide after this one. Here we go. So with respect to the program of the building, the basement will be demolished and extended for living space. As you can see here on the left-hand side of the screen, we do have a playroom, a full bathroom, a laundry room. That area, that will be apartment to unit one. The main level of the first floor would be the kitchen and living area. That's intended to be a two-bed, three-bath. Next slide, please. So you can see here, the upper level, these are both bi-level units. The upper level occupies the second floor as well as the, will be the attic level. That will be expanded to allow for clear head height, and one of the reasons why we're extending the shed dormers on the roof. And as you can see, we do incorporate two bedrooms on the upper level as well, as long, as well as a family room. This is intended to be for home ownership upon completion, so each of these units would be individual condominium units. Next slide, please. Probably move to the next slide for the elevations. One more, there we go. So you can see here all of the various angles of the building. We do not propose to change the footprint of the building at all, except for a small portion of the rear decks, which will be rebuilt. And we require minimal relief for this proposal. First, the left side yard condition is currently set at 7.5 feet. That's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. Because we are altering the existing dormer on the left side of the building, and because that will be within the 10-foot setback that is now required, we do require relief on the left side. However, I would reiterate that we don't bring the building itself any closer to the current non-conformity. With respect to FAR, the floor-to-air ratio will be increased because we are capturing some space in the lower level to make that part of the first, first unit. And then obviously finishing that upper third level off will add floor space as well. So we are increasing the FAR to be 0.7 overall. That is in excess of the 0.5 that is permitted. But we feel that based upon the fact that this is an existing condition, existing building, you know, the modifications are relatively minor, and that should not really affect the intent of the FAR limitations. Lastly, because we aren't changing, we're actually not changing the physical height of the building, the height will remain the same. By altering the dormers that presently exist and increasing the clear ceiling height, that makes that upper level considered the next story. So the limit in this neighborhood is 2.5 stories, and this change would result in a three-story building. So we do require relief for the height with respect to the number of stories as well. I believe that concludes all of the slides I got for this. I'm happy to address any comments or questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we can move to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Diana Bronchuk, the Mayor's Roseland Liaison from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We held a butters meeting on September 20th with three butters attending. Most of the questions were around communicating to immediate butters about construction for noise and moving purposes. The team presented at the West Village Neighborhood Association on September 20, 28th. The Neighborhood Association did not have any concerns, since the project does not add to the heat index. We have not received any statements regarding this project, and so at this time, we defer judgment to the board.
Okay, Sand Derby, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal? I sent a request to unmute you. I have no additional wasted hands.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve of BPDA design review.
Second.
All right, Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I too vote yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Next, next we have Case BOA 1528468 with the address of 8 to 10 Perkin Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to, to the board?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Mario.
Ah, yes, it's just, it, so I'm seeking to remove the proviso listed to ELOF for takeout only on the pizza shop that I'm about to open. This is in order to get the certificate of occupancy.
And, and you are the?
I'm the new owner. I purchased the business. Yeah.
You're the new owner? Okay, you purchased the business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any questions from the board? Seems pretty straightforward. Public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Neighborhood Services. We're unaware of any concerns at this time with this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, I have no wasted hands.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take them.
Thank you. Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I too vote yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will go to three companion cases. One coming from the 11 o'clock hour. And that, so the first one will be Case BOA 907493 with the address of 1 to 5 Boardman Street. Along with that, we will have, and these are all Article 80 cases. Along with that, we'll have Case BOA 1171660, the address of 970 Saratoga Street. And with, and with those two, we will have Case BOA 1509717 with the address also of 970 Saratoga Street. Again, they are all Article 80 cases, and would the applicant and/or their representative explain to the board?
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Stenbridge, and good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. Pleased to be here today on behalf of MG2 Group, who is the project proponent. With me is also Eric Zacherson, who is the project architect. Probably slide down to slide two for our introduction. So by way of very brief introduction, Madam Chair, this is an Article 80 project approved by the Boston Building Development Agency back on September 14th. This does involve the demolition of an existing auto repair facility on a combined 9,000 square foot lot. That's located at 1 to 5 Boardman Street. It's also known, has been referred to in the Article 80 documents as 2 Ford Street. This also involves the redevelopment of the existing parking lot located directly across the street from 2 Ford Street, known as 970 Saratoga Street, containing approximately 6100 square feet. Our project contemplates two new mixed-use buildings. It will contain a total of 41 residential units, two ground-level retail spaces, and 10 garage parking spaces, along with areas for bike parking and storage. These buildings are both designed to comply with the coastal flood resilience overly district requirements and the provisions of Article 25A based upon their location. I think it's also important to point out that the proponent is committed to provide up to seven IDP units. That represents 17% of the total residential units in the project. This project is intended for rental, and therefore, six of the units would be limited to households earning no more than 70% AMI, and one household at 100% AMI. We can probably jump down to, I have a slide script. Let's start here. So looking at this is an overview of Orient Heights Square. It is a mixed-use commercial district, which includes a number of retail spaces as well as multifamily uses. As the board will note, this is a relatively denser area of East Boston. It is the gateway to the Orient Heights community. It is significant that this is located within very close walking distance to the MET Blue Line, Orient Heights T Station, as well as Constitution Beach. Let's get down to slide three here. Just some street views of the existing conditions. This sits at the intersection of three streets, Ford Street, Saratoga Street, and Boardman Street, all of which converge at a circle roundabout in the Orient Heights Square. We can see the photos of the existing auto repair facility, which has existed at the site for many years. That will be demolished, and the block located directly across the street, as you can see from the bottom-left side, is a parking lot that is completely covered. Let's move down to slide six, please. Perfect. So as you can see here, the orientation of the sites, as I mentioned, are located directly across from each other. This, the project does contemplate substantial public realm improvements, as you can see here. New sidewalks as well as inlays for bricks, street trees, et cetera, will be added to this project. There are curb cuts presently on Boardman Street that run a significant distance for the 2 Ford Street side of the project. There's also a curb cut on the 970 Bennington, 970, 970 Saratoga Street side as well. We will be reducing the curb cut for the 2 Board, the 2 Ford Street project, because that will be the location of the garage parking entrance. That will be 12 feet in width, and closing up the remainder of that curb cut on that side. There is no parking being proposed on the 970 Saratoga Street side, so that entire curb cut will be closed as well. We can go down to, let's see, the next slide. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to hand it off to Eric Zacherson to talk a little bit about the renderings. So, you know, in the process in which we've worked very closely with the BPDA, and coming up with a design to ensure this certainly aligns with the squares and corridors, anticipated zoning for East Boston. So Eric, if you could just talk a little bit about the design, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you, Rich. So these, these two buildings are going to be clearly very prominent and set the tone for the square. So we have to, we want to work very much to make them feel as important as they are. And at the same time, the surrounding building stock is a lot of horizontal siding, whether it be wood or vinyl or cement fiberboard. So in, in both buildings, we've used a rich material right on the corner, and then switched out into a cement fiberboard for a lot of the body of the building, creating an interesting facade, trying not to create something that is too long, but also something that is kind of important without being too tall. So as you can see here, this is looking at the corner of 970 Saratoga brick facade, right at the corner. We're kind of bullnosing it as, as the site does. And then from that, after a couple of window bays, we, we switch it out to be cement fiberboard with the inset decks. It was very important that we not overhang the public part of the sidewalk. We are pulling parts of the sidewalk in under our overhang in order to create a nice, complete street compliant sidewalk. There's, as you can see, new street trees being planted on both sides of the street, and, and a portion of the walk has to come into our property, which we think will help benefit and, and enliven the commercial space on the ground floor of both spaces. So you're looking at the larger commercial space on 970 Saratoga here, and right on your right, you actually see the, the kind of hint of the, the entrance and the entrance lobby and the commercial space for 2 Ford. Next slide. And this is the, the building of 2 Ford. So we wanted them to feel very similar without being too identical and trying to like, kind of impose our will on the other four or five buildings that are on the street. There's a lot of brick around as you go up the street, and we wanted to reflect that. But this building is, is showing a wood look bay panel in order to create that warmth. But again, using a, a horizontal siding that more matches some of the neighboring, the neighboring buildings as you go down Boardman Street, as you go on Ford and Saratoga. Next slide. And then seeing them together, you can see how we've kind of accentuated the, the one being a little bit more square and the other being, having that rounded nose, but really kind of creating a gateway. As a lot of people will enter East Boston coming down Boardman Street into this square, whether you're entering or exiting East Boston, this can, this, we want to feel like this is a appropriate gateway, warm entrance. Next slide.
I think that's the last on the render. We just hope, we just jump back to the rendering slide. Probably a good place to stop.
All right, any questions from the board? I know this is an extensive.
Have you, have you, have you explored variations of different elevations and material with the BPDA?
Yeah, quite a few of them over the last three years, and we plan to continue to kind of refine that. We believe that they are, I would say, heading towards, very comfortable with the current design. But as, as you know, during the CD process, we will have to kind of refine and develop the detail of it. And, you know, having the material palette in a direction that they like is, is, is where we kind of are right now.
Right, I mean, just, just from urbanistically, you're, you have two prominent buildings. It's a gateway, it's a threshold, you know, for the square. I would hope that, that it can be a little bit creative. You know, it's looking very much like, like many of the buildings that exist in Boston, but this is an opportunity for, for it to be something new. And so I would just encourage, encourage that. And so I would just encourage, encourage that. So it's, you know, so it's exciting to be at.
Madam Chair, if I may just add a couple of additional points that I think are important for the record here. I just want to point out that the project does include two retail spaces, one in each building with a total of 4,400 square feet of new retail for the neighborhood. The proponent has committed to market these retail spaces to create new business opportunities for East Boston residents and East Boston businesses. So we did some important component as part of the community benefits for this. In addition, there will be a total of 19 one-bedrooms, approximately 700 square feet, 22 bedrooms at about 875 square feet, and 2 three-bedrooms, about 1,200 square feet. Real quickly on the zoning, both sites are currently located under Article 53 in the neighborhood shopping district. Significantly, these uses, mixed-use multifamily with retail at the lower level is currently in allowed use, as well as the lot sizes that are being proposed are conforming under Article 53 for neighborhood shopping. But it is also equally important to point out that the violations from which we're seeking relief under Article 53 are all being addressed as part of new zoning for squares and quarters, especially for East Boston. This project has undergone a pretty long process with the BPDA, at least three years of design and conversations and redesigns. And we feel that based upon the input that we heard from the BPDA staff, who've done a phenomenal job of guiding us on what they want to see for a project that aligns with plenty of spots. And we think this project certainly meets or exceeds all of those requirements.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the mass thing is, is, works. It works really well. I'm just looking at the rendering in front of us where there is not that much detail. And so I was hoping that Eric can work with the BPDA. I'm assuming this is still conceptual. But the added detail and a sense of scale is added to the project, just because of its significance.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? No, we will take public testimony.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melvia Gomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The BPDA conducted the community process for this project. However, the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council met on July 17th, and the applicant presented to the group. The council membership ultimately voted to oppose the project, with three members in favor and 40 opposed and two abstained. Those in opposition stated that they felt setbacks were inefficient, height was excessive, there were concerns about not enough parking, and that the building would lead to parking problems for neighboring businesses with residents occupying the spaces in the square. Additional concerns were raised around the impact to the flow of traffic from deliveries. There is a suggestion to have a car share, however, that would be used exclusively by residents of the building to mitigate this. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Pira from Councilor Colletta's office. The council is made a leader of support for this project in front of the BPDA. And the council would like to show of support as well right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go to Josh and then Britton. Josh, okay. Sorry, Britton, Baton.
Hi, I'm Attorney Britton Munson. I represent 964 Saratoga, that's right next to the 970 Saratoga that's going in. We're opposing the building purely on kind of what was already addressed earlier from mentioning the Orient Heights. The concern for parking with it, as there are so many residential units that are going in on both sides of the street with very little parking for the Boardman side and none on the Saratoga. And at the moment, Boardman is already a very congested street, especially that roundabout. And when there's funerals, which happens pretty often, parking is already taken up. So to not have any added parking to it, we feel is going to really hinder the businesses in the area for making it just kind of a nightmare for their clients to come and find parking and patronize the businesses in the area. And of course, we know they're putting in commercial spaces. Those people will need somewhere to park as well. So at the moment, we oppose, just based on the fact that there is no added parking yet. We're bringing a lot of people to an already very congested area.
Thank you. Okay, and Stephen? Is he going to give testimony? Steve, Stephen? Okay. Minor, did you go?
No, yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Madam Chair, members of the board, my honor, who is representing the carpenters union on behalf of all our East Boston residents. I'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. We were all set. No dictating.
Can I respond just briefly, Madam Chair, to counsel? I'll be quick.
Sure, quickly.
Yep. So, you know, I do understand, and I've had a chance to, it's actually unfortunate they're opposing the project. This is the first I'm hearing about our director butter at the restaurant, who does not have any parking for her business, opposing this project. In fact, I find it somewhat ironic that recently, they've just gone through a zoning process, which we, you know, had no objection to, and have worked very closely with them to address their zoning concerns, especially for when they needed relief for a project that they're getting ready to undertake. So I find it a little unfortunate that this is the first I'm hearing about opposition to this. I would have been happy to work that out with his client. We've certainly been at this long enough, and we've had plenty of conversations with them about it. So I just want to point that out. With respect to the parking, I also would want to point out new zoning recognizes that the proximity to this, of this site to public transit under new zoning for Article 80 small project, the BPDA will make an appropriate determination on what is appropriate parking. And in this case, the Boston Transportation Department recommends a maximum number of parking spaces, not minimum, based upon proximity to public transit. So we are simply adopting the recommendations of BPDA, as well as BTD, when it comes to parking. And we feel that we are in line, both with the BTD's recommendations and BPDA's guidelines with respect to new development. So thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, regards to BTD, I don't know if Bob D'Amico is present, but he did make some comments that he sent out. Basically, what he said was that for 1 to 5 Boardman Street, he asked to replace the location of the light pole to remove any conflict regarding access and egress to the parking location. He also asked to install an audio and visual alarm to warn pedestrians of vehicles exiting the garage. And finally, he asked that the parking garage should include one electric charging station.
Mr. Lynn, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I believe those are all included, the designer review comments. So we're happy to address that with BPDA. Not an issue.
Okay. All right, I understand. I know other questions or comments from the board. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion of approval to support this project. I think the amount of parking is appropriate near transit. I think the project will also add foot traffic to the neighborhood, so residents won't need a car to patronize nearby businesses. I think the addition of the 27 residential units with seven IDP units, most of them at 70% AMI, are a really strong component to this project, so I'm supporting it.
Second.
All right, Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I, too, vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
And along, so if we're moving on path, past these 970 Saratoga Street, then the next, we'll also move past the next one for 106 Barnes Avenue, which was deferred.
Right.
Which brings us to the final Article 80 case for today, being case BOA 153 4462, with the address of 9 McCade Place. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, we are, Mr. Stembridge.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, I have a business address at 51 Dobson Road. With me today as part of our development team, you have Mr. Josh Smith from Zephyr Architects. You have Paul Classicantilli and Amethu Gonzalez, who are consultants on the project. And Mr. John Murphy as part of the ownership group. Madam Chair, today, we're here seeking relief for the project at 9 McCade Place. This is an Article 80 BPDA board-approved project. And the, consists as follows. The project consists as follows. 41 residential units. We have 35 parking spaces. We have 42 enclosed bike spaces. And the units break down as we have 17 one-bedroom, 13 two-bedroom, 11 three-bedroom. With regard to affordability, Madam Chair, we are at 17% affordable units. That would be seven units and two three-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and three one-bedrooms. I will turn it over here to Josh Smith from Zephyr Architects to go through the program and go through the slides presentations.
Thank you.
Josh? Jessica, has Josh been up elevated to panelist?
Just, I try, he's unmuted, but I tried to make him panelist earlier. Josh, can you hear us? Oh, okay, he just, he just accepted it. So you'll have to unmute yourself, Josh, once that becomes, once you become a panelist.
I've now joined as a panelist.
Yep, we can hear you now.
You're coming in very low.
A little bit louder, though? Yeah.
Our project is at 9 McCade Place, at the corner of Maverick and McCade, East Boston.
You're still pretty faint. We can't all hear you. Anyway, you can adjust your volume.
See what I can do. Microphone volume is all the way up. Am I so very quiet?
I think you're okay. Thank you.
Speak loudly.
Okay. Yeah, so our project is the, demarcated by these pink boundary lines at the corner of Maverick and McCade Place. We're directly adjacent to the Dow McCade School in East Boston, and along Maverick, which is turning into a local neighborhood connector. Next page.
Madam Chair, we can't hear him for the record.
Josh, try. Try calling up.
Yeah. I'm really talking loud.
Sorry. I'll speak as loudly as I can. So you can see the, again, the pink dots demarcating our site at the corner of Maverick and McCade. Our context is largely triple-deckers, double-triple-deckers, and a few larger recent multifamily developments, including those at the corner of Maverick and Frankford Street. Is that good down for us? Next slide.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this is Sam with Legal. But in terms of, you know, record-keeping of a meeting law, I'm having a hard time being able to take notes for this. I don't know if the applicant can move where their speaker picks up their voice so that we can just better transcribe.
Maybe, maybe Derek, you can take over.
Well, the architect is more savvy with regard to the plans themselves than I am, so. Josh, you might want to try logging off and then logging back in. I don't know if that will help.
It may be where their microphone picks up voice, just putting that closer to where they're sitting. I'm not sure if they're using a desktop. I think Zoom sometimes picks up different microphones, too, so just making sure the correct one is selected as well.
And then I think you need to go back to the beginning of your presentation.
Josh, just try calling in with your phone. Leave the presentation up and mute it on a computer, call with your phone. Unmute your phone and maybe just talk that way.
I'll speed up, too.
Is Josh the only speaker? I heard, saw John came on.
Yeah, John is part, John is the owner.
Oh, okay.
Part of the ownership group. And again, Josh prepared the slideshow in the deck, so that's why. It's probably beneficial that he runs through it, since he knows all the intricacies of the presentation, since he prepared it. Do apologize for this, Madam Chair. Josh, how are you doing?
Madam Chair, this is not conventional, but I could also call the applicant and have their speaker possibly. I'm not sure if that would work, but we are a bit of, we're making very good time today, so I'm happy to.
Can we take a five-minute break?
We could, we could take a five-minute break. That can be done.
Okay, all right.
Come back over, we can start.
Okay, terrific. You guys can test your mics. Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's proceed. Nine McKay Place. Do we need a roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, roll call. Ms. Dong?
Present.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
All right, great. Let's proceed.
All right, so again, sorry for the delay, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Again, Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address at 51 Dobson Road. With me today as part of the team is Mr. Josh Smith, who is the architect, Amedo Gonzalez, and Paul Passacatilli, who are the consultants for the project, and John Murphy as the ownership group. Today, we're here seeking relief for the project at nine McKay Place. This project is an Article 80 BPD A board-approved project. And the project will consist of forty-one residential units, thirty-five parking spaces, forty-two enclosed bike parking spaces. And the unit breakdown is as such. We have seventeen one-bedrooms, thirteen two-bedrooms, and eleven three-bedrooms. We have seven units for affordable at seventeen percent. And those units consist of two three-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and three one-bedroom units. Josh, we'll turn it over to you and you can go through the program of the slide deck.
Okay. Thank you, Derek, and thank you, team.
All right.
Our project is located here at the corner of McKay Place and Maverick Street, about point-three miles away from Maverick Square. So it seems a great location for a transit-oriented residential development like this. Next screen, please. And here's a view from the west of the same location showing the local multifamily buildings, the context of triple-deckers and the adjacent McKay School. Next screen, please. Here's the zoning map of our site. We're combining six lots at the corner of McKay and Maverick. We're technically within the three-family zone, and we're budding the multifamily residential directly behind us. Next screen, please. The existing site conditions are three two- and three-story triple-decker-style buildings and one commercial club. They're all in the process of being emptied currently and not in great condition. If you'll check the next slide, please. So the buildings don't have a substantial architectural character and have not been cared for over the past century. So we were planning on removing them and building the new multifamily building on their site. Next screen, please. These are the existing and proposed site plans. On the left, you can see the existing three residential buildings and on the right, the single commercial building. And on the right, you're seeing our proposed plan of a forty-one-unit residential building with parking and residential amenities on the first floor and a pocket park at the corner of Maverick and McKay. We really wanted to use this project to increase the green space in East Boston. There aren't a lot of areas in Jeffreys Point where you can just be underneath a tree canopy or sit back and relax. So a large part of the design of our project was to leave this open space at the corner of Maverick and McKay. Next slide, please. On our first floor, we have a garage with thirty-five parking spaces. Per the BPD A guidelines, we're close enough to Maverick Square that they wanted us to have a substantially lower parking ratio. But to help support the neighborhood, we've increased it up to point-eight-seven as far as we could physically go. We have the lobby and gym and bicycle parking on the first floor, and then again, the public park at the corner, which will include a new bus stop and space to lounge and potentially to have small CSA deliveries or farmers' markets or events of that sort. We're open to programming it and working with community. We're also leaving our meeting room open to be used by local nonprofits and organizations as a gathering space. Next page, please. The unit mix, as Derek said, is weighted heavily towards two- and three-bedrooms. We're trying to provide spaces for families to live and trying to provide this as a place where, like East Boston, people can age in place or like move up unit sizes as they need or move down sizes if they need. So we're trying to make it as geared towards large units as possible. If you'll, one more page down, please. The fifth floor, we've set back between twelve and twenty-six feet on all sides so that the fifth floor is really not visible from the street. And then we have seven IDP units, which put us at seventeen percent IDP. The current regulation is only thirteen, so we're going a bit beyond the IDP regulation in order to get some extra space on the fifth floor. Next page, please. This is the current building massing, where the corner park is really the focus. We have garage entrance and loading on McKay Place to avoid adding traffic to Maverick itself and then have roof decks and balconies around to give as much exterior space to residents as possible. We're building a new bus stop and removing ones adjacent down the street at Frankfurt and Cottage to try and make MBTA service here more convenient in collaboration with the Transportation Department. Next slide, please. So this is a general rendering of how we're imagining the building will look. We're using brick on all the sides facing Maverick and McKay. We're using standing seam metal for the fifth floor and the elevator penthouse. And along the rear sides, we'll be switching to a fiber-cement clapboard siding to be consistent with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And then this is just giving a bit more information on the plaza at the corner. We'll have an open area with benches and steps, a sloped ramp with seating areas leading up to a raised courtyard. And we're also incorporating a monument that's currently at one of the sites on, in our existing layout. There's a World War II monument there that we're relocating into our new corner park. Next page, please. So this is a breakdown of the materials. So we're using red brick for most of it, white brick along the front, along the Maverick facade, a gray granite base along most of the park to make it feel high-quality, and brass accents along the windows. Next page. These are the remaining facades of the building, where we continue brick along the McKay Place facade and wrapping around a bit on the corners and then transitioning to mostly clapboard along the two back facades, but have balconies for almost all of those units to try and give them as much exterior space as possible. Next slide, please. And we've also worked to make sure that the fifth floor does not make our building seem substantially taller than the ones around it. There are several four-story buildings around us along with most of the triple-deckers. And so we've set back our fifth floor such that it's invisible from most views around the site. You can just scroll through the next two pages. There are views from around various angles around the site where you can see that the fifth floor does not really appear. And then this is the list of zoning variances that we need. We have insufficient area per unit, insufficient open space. We're going up to five stories rather than three. Our FAR is two-point-seven-six over the allowed one. And then we have some side yard setbacks, or rear yard setback we need, and then the parking. The zoning code requires two spaces per unit. We're trying to get as close to one as we can, and we're up to point-eight-seven. So these are what we need. And so that is generally this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board? All right, hearing none. Let's go to public testimony.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Malavie Gomu, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The BPD A conducted the community process for this project. However, the applicant met with the Gulf Street Citizens Association Community three times between November of 2022 and July of 2023. They maintained open communication throughout this period. The Gulf Street Citizens Association members and nine McKay Place abutters were asked to weigh in during this process on two questions via an online poll. Regarding the first question, whether to support or oppose the project, the votes are as follows. Fourteen votes for support and eight votes to oppose. For the second question regarding IDP affordability, the votes are as follows. The Board proposed raising of the affordable units to six units at seventy percent of area median income, and this received fourteen votes. The current McKay Place proposal of four units at eighty percent area median income and three units at a hundred percent area median income received only eight votes. The Civic Association emphasized the affordability of the project was what swayed the support for the project overall. And additionally, one abutter emailed Neighborhood Services and shared concerns about not being engaged with enough during this whole community process and feeling concerned about the project given her property is directly abutting to the proposed project. She was also given the contact information for the developer through Neighborhood Services and was able to get in touch with them. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the Board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Subajam Parra from Counselor Coletta's office. Throughout the community engagement process, the residents of East Boston have requested this project to go to twenty percent affordability. And Counselor Coletta has echoed this request and would like to see that happen. For that reason, the Council would like to go on a position of this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We have both G-card letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Hi, Jimmy?
Okay.
Sorry, anyone else? We go to public testimony? No? Okay, Jimmy?
I'm just in support of it. I think it's beautiful. Lifelong resident, right down the street on the corner of Cottage and Maverick. I've seen those houses just become what they are now. And I think that building is beautiful, and I'd love to see it go forward.
Can you state your phone name and address?
Sure. My name is Jim McManus. Two-four-four Maverick Street, East Boston.
Okay, Brian? Brian?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brian Tumbaga. I and my family own two McKay Place in East Boston, right as an abutter to this property. I want to go on record and say that I oppose this development. We have communicated with the developers on a future occasion but haven't been able to get to a to a good sort of understanding. One of the biggest issues is parking. You know, the zoning ordinance says two spots per unit. They are not even at one. I understand that it is somewhat close to Maverick, but parking is already terrible in that part of East Boston, Jeffreys Point, not to mention traffic on stop, especially in the school days and especially when they, you know, when it is trash collection time. There also is still a safety concern, especially with students leaving McKay School as they walk in and out of that little spot that is McKay Place. It is already a very small street, and there's already a lot of heavy foot traffic, and especially with having the loading dock right there that will continue to be something that, you know, it'll take one tragedy for this to be a terrible thing of a kindergarten student not looking long way.
Thank you. Alexandra?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm here speaking on behalf of my parents, the owners of two McKay Place. I'm going to list off a couple of concerns that we have. These are not all-encompassing. We've also submitted more concerns via written testimony. So just to name off a few. The first one is that we have asked the development team for a pedestrian walkway plan for the extent of their construction period. They were unable to provide any semblance of a walkway plan. We have a lot of concerns around safety, not just for the schoolchildren, although that would be a reason enough on its own, but also for ourselves and for our tenants. This proposed development would take up all of the walkway on the north side of McKay Place for over a year for the construction period. That would leave only our side of the street, which already is overburdened with garbage bins for more than twenty-four to thirty-six hours at a time. And last I counted last week, there were over twenty-five bins. That's just one issue that we have. Parking, again, to reiterate what Brian just said, parking is a huge concern. My parents are longtime owners and residents of two McKay Place and often have to park two, three, four blocks away from our property, putting it another development without a one-to-one ratio. The code says two parking spots for every unit, and that's for a reason. We need at least a one-to-one ratio of parking because it affects not just my family, not just our tenants, but also our neighbors. We've tried to speak with the development team on multiple occasions about our reservations and concerns with this project, but they've offered absolutely no solutions, and they've frankly been very dismissive of our concerns as just things residents have to deal with in order to bring in new development. My family, as direct abutters and also a family that has lived here and owned for twenty-seven years, we completely agree with Counselor Coletta about needing more affordable units. These units are not attainable for our community members. There's a reason Counselor Coletta opposes this project. Her reason is one of our reasons, along with a slew more. And honestly, we reject the notion that the developers have no responsibility to address resident concerns around safety and parking. Two McKay Place owners, which are pretty much the main direct abutters, the only other house on McKay Place, we vehemently oppose this project as it stands. The development team has been communicative but has not been helpful and has not addressed any of our concerns with safety or anything else. And so I just want it on the record that we completely oppose this project.
Thank you. We have a couple of the raised hands, I see. Hi, Caitlin, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what happened to my microphone earlier. But good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Caitlin Stapleton from Counselor Murphy's office. Because this project will create seven affordable units within the development that will be accessible to residents within an eighty to a hundred percent range of median income, the Council believes that it will be a positive addition to the East Boston community. The applicant has also engaged in extensive community outreach and has worked to accommodate any concerns that neighbors may have. Because of this, Counselor Murphy would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the Board, mine authorize her proceeding with car into city. On behalf of Congress over Boston residents, I want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. And I would note that Bob D'Amico from BTD has recommended that the installation of an audio and visual alarm to warn pedestrians and children going to the McKay School of vehicles exiting the garage. Is that something your client's willing to?
Yes, it is. May I respond, Madam Chair?
And the other thing he recommended is a electric charging station. So can you respond to that and briefly to some of the comments?
Sure. So, Madam Chair, first and foremost, we have met with and been in constant communication with representatives from McKay School. And we have agreed to put in stuff that, and the entrance and exits, to the entrance and exit to the garage. We have sound and visual warning signs alerting students of incoming and oncoming traffic. So we do have that. And again, we have met with representatives from McKay School with regard to that. With regard to electric station, yep, we can put electric station in a parking again. We have forty-one residential units, and we have thirty-five parking spaces. And we are two blocks away from the T Station. With regard to safety plan... With regard to safety plan, you know, when the project is permitted, we will be required to put in and get approved by city agencies the construction management plan and the transportation management plan for pedestrians and traffic around the development site. Those things have to be approved by BTD and BPDA. And we will continue to work with those agencies on those plans. And we will continue to have dialogue with the Zulega family and the community folks around these issues as the project proceeds.
Thank you. Any other, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I just have a comment where it's more for BPDA and maybe the BPDA representative can respond. I found the submissions for the Article 80 to be a little bit inconsistent in regards to the level of schematic design in front of the board. And I just wanted to just get clarification on that. And I'm talking specifically the difference between this project representation that detailed highly what the community is going to get at the end in terms of material, in terms of aesthetics versus the previous Article 80 project we reviewed, the 970 Saratoga Street, that it's not consistent in terms of the representations of it. So that's just kind of a comment.
So was the BPDA project manager on? To respond? Can you unmute? I think that's Alexandra.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if Jeff, I don't know if Jeff is still on or if someone from the BPDA project panel is there.
Or your BPDA project manager?
There's something there on.
Madam Chair, in the meantime, I have another question for Mr. Small. Have you, one of the big concerns for the community is about affordability. So have you had any conversations with the development team about increasing the number of affordable units and also deepening the area median income level for those units?
Yeah, I know we had talked about it with the development team. I know John Murphy's on from the ownership team. But again, we are, the requirement is 13 and we are definitely at 17% doing seven affordables. I don't know if John, he want to add anything on to that. But in the BPDA was very supportive of the 17% affordability for the project.
Yeah.
We're very comfortable with that.
You're asking more about the AMI levels, 80 and 100. Could those be deepened in any way?
I think that's, you know, we can have that discussion with BPDA about deepening them.
Okay.
But we're open to that without a doubt.
All right.
And I don't want BPDA representative as an eye, but.
To just close the loop, since there is no BPDA representation right now, is it possible, have your, if you can just communicate to BPDA or at least a response, that the representations of projects that are before, in front of us should have the same level and quality of design execution and representation so that we can make a more firm kind of decision on what the community is getting at the end?
Yes, board member, handsy. I can fore that along.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Now I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the project with BPDA review and special attention for the developer to discuss with the BPDA ways to increase the number of affordable units and deepen the levels of affordability for those units. And I'm going to ask the board members if they want to add any other proviso. So with that, that's my motion.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Stedbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Nine two vote yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that's our agenda for the day. The substitute got off easy.
Save myself though. Thank you.
All right, feel better, chair.
Have a good day.